Good evening and welcome to the October 26, 2015 Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Troy City Manager Brian Kishnik lead us with the invocation, so if you would please rise for that. And then we have a special, a special group that is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will introduce them when they come up to the podium, but Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. And to start, maybe we could just have a moment of silence for your own prayer in preparation for tonight's invocation. Dear Lord Heavenly Father, we come to you today with all grace and gratitude for the blessings that you bestow upon us as individuals, leaders, residents, and this great community of Troy. We thank you for everything that you lead us in and provide for us, as we know, all things come through you, dear Lord. We ask that you would bless us tonight during this meeting and give us the wisdom and the information and the knowledge to make great decisions for the city of Troy and for everyone who has chosen to live here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Well done. And now it's my privilege to ask the pack of fireflies from the Three Fires Lawn House to please come forward, and they're going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance Good evening, girls.
Aye.
Whenever you're ready.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repose for religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in any way or form.
Thank you very much. Well done. We appreciate you coming here and joining us this evening. Thank you. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell? Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Mayor Pro Tem Campbell that he would be out of the county this evening and not be able to make our council meetings, so I will move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Campbell at the regular city council meeting of October 26, 2015, due to being out of the county. Second. Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Campbell. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations, so I will call upon Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, to come up and introduce our first special presentation, and I will meet them at the podium.
Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Pam Brady, who is our liaison with SACRA to accept a proclamation on behalf of America Recycles Month.
Good evening, Pam.
Hi, Dana.
Do you want to come on this side?
Sure.
Face the audience? Would that be okay?
There we go. I like your tie.
Thank you. Well, once again, it's my privilege and honor to present the proclamation for America Recycles 2015. And Pam, if I could read this, I think it's more, most important that everyone understands the importance of recycling. So whereas the world has changed a lot in the past century, from individually packed foods serving to disposable diapers, more garbage is generated now than ever before. The average American discards 7.5 pounds of garbage every day. Our garbage, our solid waste stream, all goes to landfills where it is compacted and buried. And whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles 2015 and are encouraging their employees, staff, customers, membership, and all citizens to pledge to buy more recycled content products starting today. And whereas participating in America Recycles 2015 is one way our citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing recycling and buying recycled products. And whereas the more we recycle, the less garbage winds up in our landfills and incineration plants. By reusing aluminum, paper, glass, plastics, and other materials, we can save production and energy costs and reduce by up to 75% the negative impacts that the extraction and processing of virgin materials has on the environment. Plastics made from precious and nonrenewable petroleum and aluminum, which are mined from bauxite, are especially important to recycle. And whereas recycling helps protect our resources, our environment, and our quality of life, the entire loop, reduce, reuse, recycle, is completed when we buy products that are recycled material. And whereas from July 2014 to June 2015, the city of Troy recycled 4,566 tons of glass, paperboard, cardboard, newspaper, metal, tin, and plastic, and 9,173 tons of compost. Well done. And whereas state and community leaders need to spread the word about the excellent programs they have established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. So now therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy Council hereby proclaims America Recycles 2015 in the city of Troy, Michigan, and urges all Troy residents to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Be it further resolved that the American Recycles 2015 is celebrated year-round to encourage people to recycle and buy products made from recycled materials. The theme for America Recycles 2015 is: One Day to Educate, One Day to Motivate, One Day to Make Recycling Bigger and Better. 365 days a year. Get involved. Presented this 26th day of October 2015, signed by myself, all members of the city council. Congratulations to you, Pam, on behalf of America Recycles 2015. Thanks for all you do for the city. Thank you so much.
Least I can do. It's my city.
That's right. Thank you. Did you want to say a few words?
Yes.
Do you want to get a picture? I would like to get a picture with Pam.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, fellow residents. I am Pam Brady, and the hat I'm wearing tonight is that of SACRA, Master Recycler and Volunteer Member of their Recycling Committee. I am also a SACRA Advanced Master Composter, with all that it implies, being a member of both groups since their inception's over 25 years ago. You won't see a compost bag at my curb because we compost it all on-site, and we do it legally and we do it with great joy because that's black beautiful gold that we look, put on our gardens. And you're welcome to come and see them sometime if you're willing, and you'll see that our front yard is pretty much clean. Each year for over 10 years, I have approached the Troy City Council and asked for this proclamation to make it America Recycles Day in Troy. Why? I want to make my fellow residents aware that recycling is not a fad, that it is a continuing effort for the environment and should be carried out to ever greater intensity. It's an eco thing that sounds and feels good and is good. Recycling goes hand in hand with everything we do in this city. There are recycle bins in the Troy Community Center, at Troy Events, and in front of almost every house on our streets. Every year I stand before you and share with you that SACRA has added something more that can be recycled or is easier to recycle. Last year it was recycling of all Styrofoam, except for peanuts, at the Murph, that can be taken to Kinko's UPS or Mail Store, and they will reuse those peanuts. This year I can tell you that SACRA's Material Recovery Facility, their recycling center, is now able to take household hazardous waste and electronics without an appointment. The staff even covers lunchtime so that the uninterrupted hours are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 8 until 3:30, Wednesday from 8 until 5:30, Saturday from 8 till 2, and closed on Sunday. So there's no need to keep those hazardous wastes in your home. Get rid of the medicines and the things that you clean the house with, and keep your house clean, neat, fire safe, and there's a good and soft way to get rid of them. No need to call in advance or worry about it if staff is there to cover the lunch hour. Just take your hazardous waste and your electronics to the west end of the Murph complex, which is at 995 Coolidge, south of Maple, across from Myers, and staff will even unload it for you. All you have to do is show proof of SACRA community residency. I invite everyone to visit the recycling website, www.sacra.org, and click on the multitude of information pieces and short videos that are available to interest you. They are all very informative, and the site is easy to navigate. New staff and council members, which we'll have at the next meeting, if you would like a citizen-to-citizen tour of the facility, please contact me. I'd be happy to show you around. Also for America Recycles Day, the SACRA Recycling Center, as well as City Hall, is selling recycling bins for the half price of $6 for all the month of November, and that includes the lid. If you are like me with the ever larger amount of items that SACRA recycles, I am using two bins weekly, and the volume of my garbage is cut by more than half. That's half going into the landfill from my house, that's half of what the city has to pay to have my garbage disposed of, and it gives twice the money to the city for what I recycle. If you need help from the city, call Emily Frantara, Troy's Office and Refuge and Recycling Coordinator, at 248-524-3399. Not that I ever call her. Trash costs us, and recycling pays us, but environmentally it is way more important. We should conserve, preserve, and protect as many natural resources as possible, especially water, for ourselves and our future generations. Thank you. (applause) I've left my hair by the way and put it in my closet.
I think Councilman Henderson would like to say something about this particular topic, and you can find it in our reports this evening, so I would defer to Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. Pam does such a great job in explaining why we need to recycle and compost, but there's a monetary factor too, and she just kind of touched on it. SACRA rebates the city $35 for each ton collected, which doesn't seem to be a lot, but when you add it up, Troy received a rebate of $159,000 last year, or, excuse me, in 2015, and avoided $123,000 in disposal costs for a total of $283,000. So that's not small change, so we appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Very good.
What he said.
Okay, there are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. E1 is a street vacation request, SV190, an alley between Vermont and Birchwood. And I see Brent Savanon, our Planning Director, is here to present us with this public hearing. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, City Council members. This item, as you mentioned, Mayor Slater, is a street vacation request for an alley located between Vermont and Birchwood, excuse me. It's located north of Maple and east of Livernoy. Here's a general location map here on the screen. Here's a more zoomed-in area. You see the alleyway, which is outlined in red. It's 18 feet wide by 240 feet long. The property to the, on the west side of the alley is controlled by Amber Properties. You will remember, on August 24, 2015, the city council approved this development. It is known as Amber Studio Aloft Apartment Building. It's 35 units. The, and this is, this is looking at the proposed development from Livernoy, so looking east. And this is a site plan. Livernoy's on the bottom. On the east side of the building, you can see the alleyway. Again, it's 18, the total alleyway is 18 feet wide by 240. The western portion, or the western nine feet of the alleyway, is proposed to be utilized for the Amber Apartment Development. And you'll notice on that nine feet, there's a proposed dumpster enclosure here, as well as some landscape materials. So that, that nine feet is proposed to be utilized by the development, but the easterly nine feet is not. It's, at this time, it will, it will remain vacant, remain unimproved, and I'll get to that in a second. This is the original platte of Addison Heights subdivision. It was platted in 1924, and it does show the alleyway here, and it goes all the way from, from Maple to the south, and north is to the right. I keep switching the directions on you, but it goes here all the way to Cherry. And because that alleyway is within a platte, and properties on both sides are within the same platte, ownership of the western half of the alley will revert to Amber Properties. Ownership of the eastern half will revert to the two homes on the eastern side of the alleyway, which is 36 Vermont and 39 Birchwood. This aerial shows a history of the vacation of this alleyway. The green shows those sections that are still intact as alleyways, but you'll notice, starting, starting on Maple Road and as you go towards Cherry, most of that alleyway that, that was platted has been vacated over time. So this is continuing, continuing the trend of vacating that alleyway. I will note that there are no underground utilities within the alleyway. There is an easement for overhead utilities. So at this time, city management recommends vacation of the alleyway, subject to retention of overhead easements within the alley. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions from council for Brent? Okay, I will open the public hearing and ask if Mr. Amber or Mr. Cohen, would you Anything you would like to say, Mr. Cohen, before we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Dennis Cohen of Plunka Cooney, and I'm here with Jerry Amber, one of the principals of Amber Apartments. So we're here tonight after, I think we've been in and out of this building since April at various meetings between the Planning Commission, the staff, and the city council. And first of all, first and foremost, we want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process. We kind of learned our lessons from our first go-around with the Amber Townhomes and, and kind of how things roll, and I think we worked very well with the staff, the Planning Commission, and with you, as well as our neighbors, who were consulted and we had meetings with all along the way. So we're here for the last step, which I've laid out in my letter of October 23rd, so I won't repeat that. This is the last step in the process. What would happen with your approval is we would close on the property with the property owner, who's been very patient and has extended us a couple times. We're very grateful for that. And then hopefully this year we could demolish the existing house that's there, but we are not going to begin construction on that site until our townhome project is substantially completed. And I do want to address that because we do have, we've kind of worked in parallel. We've been through the planning process with this project, and we started the construction on the townhomes. And simply put, as I mentioned to you at a prior meeting, we did have a situation where we had some scheduling issues, and quite frankly, we will admit to you, those were because our contractor kind of overextended themselves on a number of jobs. There was nowhere for us to go. Trades in this region are consumed by the city of Detroit, and it is nearly impossible, even if you tried, to get somebody else to come in and finish something up. We've never had this problem with this particular contractor. He's excellent, but to speed things up, you might recall on the townhomes project, we had two floors of cement walls. We are going to meet with the building department this week, and our architect has redesigned it so that we can cut down on the amount of concrete, which will speed up this next phase. You'll see that we have gone vertical with some initial walls, and we do have crews out there. They're not the full crews, but they're, they're going to be because our contractor has another project rolling off in the next week, so he'll have more people available. Believe me, no one wants this sped along more than Mr. Amber because he will incur the winter costs. That's already going to hit, but he's asked to get this, the building framed in and roofed. So we're going to be working overtime on that, but I do want to assure you, this is a company that completes what they say we're going to do. We thank you for your patience. He's not happy about it. I'm not happy about it, but that's the reality. So the project is moving forward, but albeit not as fast as we would like to have it done. So what we want to assure you is, we're not going to start the next one, which we hope you will approve this vacation tonight, until this first one is substantially completed. We're going to do what we say. That's what Amber Apartments is all about. And if you check our track record out, and I know you have, that has been the case everywhere else that we've built. So again, we're sorry, you know, and apologize for that this evening, but we're doing everything within our power. I want to assure you, the project plans have not changed, even with this design that's all interior-type things. The footprint will not change, the number of units will not change, the exterior will not change on the townhomes project. So everything from the exterior will remain the same. These are mostly internal changes that we're going to go about to, to speed that project up a little bit. So again, we want to thank you for your prior support of this project, and our first project, and we're going to continue to work hard to make both those projects come to reality and have something very positive in the community. Any questions for myself or Mr. Amber?
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Amber and Mr. Cohen this evening?
Okay. I'll tell you one thing, I've learned about construction, you can't be more transparent than construction. Everybody can see what you're doing or not doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the update. I've received a couple of calls myself, and I'm glad that you cleared that up, and personally I'm excited about the next project, but thank you for waiting for the next project till this one's done. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else out in the audience who wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Pennington?
I would like to move E1, the street vacation request, SV190, the alley between Vermont and Birchwood, as printed.
By Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we approve E1, which is a street vacation request as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Looking forward to the project. Thank you. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Good luck. Thank you.
Pray for good weather.
I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses this evening. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. There are no board and committee appointments this evening. I, too, there are no board and committee nominations this evening, so we will move to I4 as there is no closed session request this evening. I4 is the Winter Maintenance Agreement, the Road Commission for Oakland County, with an introduction by Tim Rischneck, our Public Works Director, and Kurt Bovensee, Public Works Manager. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Every winter season comes with its differences and challenges, and each year we strive to make those as minimal as possible for our traveling public. With the roadmap of the city of Troy, you'll see, oh, got that. You'll see that the red lines are county roads. We have 50 linear miles of, of county roads. Some of them are two lanes, such as Adams and South Boulevard, but our most difficult road would be Big Beaver, because you've got up to eight lanes when you include all the D cell and X cell lanes, and all the turnarounds, and it also has the, well, some of the highest volumes of traffic in the city of Troy. We've had this contract with Oakland County for 14 years now, and over the first six years, we had an average of about a 2% increase in funds each of those seasons. We had a five-year stretch from 2008 through 2013, where there were no increases in, in funds presented to the city, yet we accepted those contracts because we understood that it was to the benefit of the city and its residents to do so. Last year, and between last year and this year, we've seen another 10% increase, so it, it, there's a little bit of a catch-up there, but it certainly does not cover our cost by any means. One of the largest items that is a cost to the city of Troy certainly is, is salt. And every winter that we've had, where we've had extensive snows and colder temperatures, our salt volume use in the region always goes up. Supply and demand will tell you what happens the next year. Salt prices go up. So back in, in 2009, 10, we saw a significant increase. After- After 2014 winter, going into last winter, we saw a double increase from $36.77 to $76.61. We've gotten half of that cost increase back for this coming winter. So you'll see significance. But that was 53% last year of our winter maintenance costs were for salt. And over the majority of the years, it was about 33%.
So I thought we'd take this opportunity just to remind everyone of our local roads. You know, besides going out on the major roads, the county roads and the city major roads, we also do the local roads. And our current procedure is anything three inches or more, with continual freezing temperatures, we'll go out and clear the local roads, or when the conditions are unsafe. So we often go out and drive the local roads and determine if the condition is unsafe. What is an unsafe condition? That could be less than three inches of very wet snow, possibly with predicted sub-zero temperatures the following day creates ice. We could go out and clear those local roads. And it might just be sections of the city as well that receive the three inches. Northern sections often get more snow than our southern section. So we might just do the northern section. So even though you don't see us out there, we could be portions of the city. And I just wanted to remind everyone that if, when we are out doing the local roads, you can follow around with our progress on the snow removal map. This is where you can see where we're at, where we're going, where we've been. And you'll notice if you continue this throughout the entire snow season, that there are only certain sections that are first. And those sections are the northwest corner of the city that are always first. And that's because of the terrain. It's the hilliest and has the most amount of curves up there. So those sections, we put all the forces in there first. The remaining of the city, we rotate. So if you're first this time, you'll be second, and there's a good chance you'll be last if we have enough snow events. Again, you can follow along. We recommend this to people that use contractors. Oftentimes, we go out and we clear the roads after someone does their driveway, and we leave that big winrow of snow, and they say they have to call their contractor back. Well, we recommend that even their contractor uses as a tool, that they don't clear their driveways until we come through, and they can tell by just looking at this map. And a reminder, one of our biggest challenges removing snow in local roads are parked cars on the street. This is not only dangerous for the plow driver to navigate around these parked cars, but it's also dangerous for when the car moves, the next day, you have this big winrow of snow in the middle of the road, unplowed section of the road. So we ask all residents, when we're doing those local roads, to please remove your cars from the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions for staff regarding I4? Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I4 Winter Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County as printed.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick that we approve I4 Winter Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County. Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick.
I just want to express appreciation to DPW as we head into the season. I've often said that, you know, police and fire are obvious safety advocates of the community, and DPW tends to be the unsung heroes of safety. And I appreciate the cautionary words about cars out on the curbs and just, everybody be careful out there and recognize that DPW is working with us to help us keep safe on our local roads and our business people getting back and forth. And really appreciate the efforts you put forward and the great stewardship of our tax dollars as you do it.
Thank you. Seems kind of early to be talking about snow.
Yeah. Thanks for reminding us about the oncoming doom.
The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is I5 Casualty and Property Insurance, a three-year renewal with Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, which is better known as MMRMA. And the packet says an introduction by Lori Blum, our city attorney, but this looks like Tom Darling this evening. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, I'm pinching today for Lori, so first all my condolences. But as we go forward, what you have in front of you is the renewal for the city's property and casualty insurance with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. This insurance covers issues like our automobile liability, property damage, slip and falls, law enforcement. The city's self-insured for the first $500,000, and we have a stop loss for about $1 million per incident. Unlike the commercial insurance, the MMRMA is a member organization risk pool, including 334 governmental entities. Fifty-one of them are in Oakland County, including the city of Troy. The city of Troy's been a member of the MMRMA since 1990, or over 25 years. The city's contribution last year was around $513,000, in which over $400,000 was refunded back to the city in the form of net asset distributions. This is a three-year contract that you have in front of you, which calls for an initial contribution of $521,684 in the first year. This is up about 1.5% or $8,000 from the prior year. The second year has a cap on it, though, not to exceed 2%. And the third year has a cap on it of 0%. It's management's recommendation to approve this three-year contract. Tonight, we're honored to have the representatives from the MMRMA to give a quick summary of the plan and to answer any questions that you may have. I'm honored to introduce, first of all, Paul Monjalo and Tim McLory from MMRMA.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, we really appreciate the relationship that we've had with you for 25 years. The moderate increase is due to the increase in budget and also the rates for law enforcement. I don't have to tell you everything going on in society today regarding law enforcement and litigation and so forth. So that is a base rate across the membership. We are a membership organization. We exist for you and for other members within the state of Michigan. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions from council? I'd just like to point out, this is simply property and liability and...
Auto. And auto.
And oil?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason that there is an increase is because property is going up and because of when we add police officers or public safety, that also increases the costs, correct?
Well, yeah, it's based on a budget. That's our rating base. And you had a significant increase in your budget. That's number one. Number two is the law enforcement base rate across the membership in the state of Michigan.
Correct. Thank you. Looks like we're all set.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I5 Casualty and Property Insurance, three-year renewal with Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve I5, the Casualty and Property Insurance, three-year renewal with Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, as printed in the agenda this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening. Appreciate it. That concludes our regular business items for this evening. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on council that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Seeing none, would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Gottlieb?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Supported by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening in the agenda as printed. Discussion. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to point out that one of the items, we have a Troy-based company that is very well-recognized, that came in as the low bidder for the camera upgrades here in the council chamber, which are much, much needed. Advanced Lighting and Sound is a company I come across in my work experience, my church experience, the school experience. And Councilman Gottlieb and I were mentioning that, you know, this is just a really great Troy, almost family members here. So I look forward to the fact that they're coming in and the customer service that we'll get on that. And I'm glad it's a Troy-based company that was the low bidder.
Very good. Councilman Henderson?
One thing I'd like to piggyback on that, in the agenda item for that particular item, the purchasing department and the city manager put that bid out and also contacted the Chamber of Commerce to get Troy businesses involved in that bid process. And that's the first I'd seen of that. So thanks for that effort, and hopefully that's ongoing.
Very well. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening. So we will move to council comments. I'll start this evening, if it's okay with council comments, because this is the final meeting for Councilman Teetz. By his choice, I'll say. And I just want to extend to Councilman Teetz my thanks for your service to the city of Troy. I'm sure it seemed like a short four years for you. But although we don't always agree, we, I think over the years, Doug, we've come to respect each other and support each other's ideas, because I know you work for what's in the best interest of the city of Troy. And you always seem to be looking out for the little guy. And I appreciate everything that you've done for the city. I don't think this is going to be the last that we see of you. But I wish you all of the best. I wish you and your family all the best. And I know you're doing this because of your family. And I think that's just great. So all the best to you, Doug. I certainly appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
I wanted to say thank you to Doug for dedicating four years of his life to the citizens of Troy and for keeping a keen eye on the fiscal responsibility of the city. Tough to do with a young family, and I wish Doug Godspeed in all of his future endeavors. We'll see you soon.
Who's next? Councilman Henderson?
I met Doug in the process of running four years ago, and it's been my pleasure to serve with Doug on this council. Doug's always been a source of relief for me. Sometimes our phone conversations, you know, it's good to have some camaraderie, and Doug has supported me. Hopefully, he feels I've supported him as well in some of his endeavors here on council. Four years brought him two kids, so I...
That's why I have to leave. Another four years.
That changes life significantly, I know. And I appreciate the sacrifice and what you've done for the community. Thanks.
Councilman Gottlieb?
If I could just echo the same sentiments, I've only had an opportunity to work with Doug for this past year, but it's been, as all council members have been, very welcoming. But also Doug was, I don't know if you remember, one of the very first to welcome me to council, and I appreciate working with you and what you've done for the city. So thank you.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
Councilman Teetz, I appreciate your efforts to keep things brief with city council and to cut to the chase. You have a way of sometimes just sorting through what is something I'm trying to sort through, and you'll say it, and I'll think to myself, that's it. That's exactly what I was thinking. And I found myself in the two years serving here, and even prior, when I watched proceedings, very often just agreeing with your pragmatic approach. I think what you did to help streamline council meetings and public comments was a huge contribution to the city that helped restore decorum, but keep the conversation still going and give people that option to speak. So you made a significant contribution here, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best. And I hope you wouldn't hesitate to call going forward if you have thoughts and insights to keep us focused and timely and stewards of the taxpayer dollar.
Thank you. Councilman Teetz, I'll let you have maybe the last word.
All right, thank you very much. And I'm overwhelmed by the number of attendees here. It's all of 10 of you, so it's a great honor. And you could please sit down for the applause. I appreciate that. In four years, a lot of people thank, the first person is my wife. Now, granted, she has never attended the city council meeting. She doesn't watch city council meetings. She doesn't read the newspaper. She doesn't watch TV for the news. So I've got great news. She won't know what I say tonight. But that said, she has been the number-one advocate of hanging in there and persevering, even though when I go to council meetings, she gets left behind with a two-and-a-half-year-old and a two-month-old. And there's just no amount of thanks that can stand behind her being willing to support me in that way, and it means a lot. And so that's a great part. And then there are many people that helped me during the campaign time. That was a lot of fun, and probably part of the most fun of the whole process was getting to meet people and know people. And there are many I can name and so forth. And especially thanks to the residents. You know, my home phone number is on the website, and people call from time to time, and hopefully we'll take that off after I'm off city council. That'd be good as well. But Saturday night at 7:00, I got a phone call from someone with questions. And people will ask me, well, Doug, that seems very obnoxious. You know, people... It's actually not a bother. It's a great privilege to have the opportunity to answer those calls and help people, because, I mean, that's what it's all about, and that's why we're all up here. And so, and I got a lot of questions. And so part of all these questions, I finally put them all together. Most of the time, I do not go through and give people full answers, because, you know, it's polite conversation sorts of questions. But I'm going to answer them definitively here tonight, all the questions. Why are you not running for office again? Great question. Running, not running for office, we have a two-and-a-half-year-old and two-month-old at home. And for the sake of varsanity and my marriage, I'm not running again. And so, very excited to be spending more time at home. Why do you look so tired, Doug? I get that question a lot. I'm tired because I don't get very much sleep. Again, to the two-and-a-half-year-old, two-year-old. Did you vote for the transit center? No, I did not vote for the transit center. Don't blame me. It wasn't my fault. That $8 million, not the best of ideas. What do you think of the city manager? Glad you asked. Brian, Brian, Brian. I think he's doing a great job. I think we're really blessed to have a city manager that is focused on common sense solutions. There's a lot of fancy, you know, things you can do and a lot of razzle-dazzle. But at the end of the day, most citizens don't care. What they care about are roads, public safety, taking care of the snow, making sure the place is running, and we're not embarrassing them. That's all they want. And that's what Brian is, or the city manager, Brian Kishnik, is focused on. And that is something that I would urge the whole city to focus on. Do the basic stuff well. You know why there's so much controversy about things like the stadium or the transit center? Because there's outside the core focus of what local government should be doing. And that's just a fundamental thing that you always wonder, well, why are people all worked up about that? Because they say, you know what? Yeah, you're working on that, but the pothole on my road is still there, and I'm upset about it. And that's why I really encourage the rest of the council to take on. Other questions I get, what are you most proud of? Oh, you know, the most of the things I'm really excited about are not the exciting things. You know, we put $2 million into the firefighters' pension fund... You know, we put $2 million into the firefighters' pension fund, you know, there's no glory in that, you know, fixing the DDA. There's nothing exciting, no one's going to put a plaque on the wall. Exciting things for me are things like the city's now meeting with the homeowner association and communicating with residents, and those are things that actually make a difference. And at the end of the day, there's no plaques, there's no excitement about that, but that's what we should be doing. Another question I get is, "How old are you?" I'm 34. I'll turn 35 December 4th, in case you're interested.
We're the same age.
Yeah, we're the same age. "Do you have any regrets?" Yeah, regrets, I've had a few, but then again, too few to mention. "Are you related to Kevin Teetz?" I get this question so often. I don't know who Kevin Teetz is, but he has got to be a really nice guy, because every single person that brings him up to me has only the highest and best things to say. So sorry, Kevin, for me serving on city council, hopefully we've agreed on some things. "Are you sure you're okay with being on city council for just one term?" Absolutely. This is not career, and boy, this would definitely not be the right career. "How much do you get paid?" This is like the number-one question people ask. $175 a month. What do you think of, you know, next question is, "Well, what do you think? Is that too much?" It's about right. We shouldn't pay council members any more than that, because you'll get people incentivized for the wrong reasons. One word to my fellow council members, and it is simply this, to be bold. I have been bold in what I've said, in what I've done, and how I voted, you know, and I don't pull any punches, I'll call a spade a spade. And sometimes what frustrates me is I'll be speaking out on something, we'll have a vote, and then afterwards, people come up to me and say, "Doug, yeah, I agree with you, totally, I'm with you." I go, "What in the world?" And I don't get discouraged very often. That's the only time I get discouraged. We all have a finite time up here. We all have a finite time on Earth. Do what you think is the right thing. Don't be dabbling, and don't try to play both sides. There's none of that, it's ridiculous. You know, I've heard arguments, "Well, you know, it's election time, oh, you know, little friends will be mad at me." Just do what you think is the right thing. Your conscience will be better, and people will not be upset or frustrated. There are a lot of people that will disagree with what I do, one way or another, but at least they know where I stand. That's all you can ask for out of people that you elect. Then the question, sometimes you get questions that are very loaded questions, you know, and people say, and they kind of almost lean in when they ask you, because they really are looking for the dirt. So number-one question I get is, "What do you think of the other council members?" And they'll kind of lean in and give me one of these, like, "You can tell me, I won't tell anybody." And so here, I'll give my full analysis. This is it. Item number one...
I think your time's up.
Yeah, I've got plenty of time here, all right. This is why, thanks for setting up a short meeting, Brian, I appreciate that, all right. They're all doing it for the right reasons. There is nobody here that is trying to, I don't know what other reasons you have, because this isn't a particularly glorious job, it's an important job, and they don't take it seriously. No one's flippant, no one's trying to take the easy way out. In fact, some of the debates and arguments and discussions are dragged on much longer than they have to be, because everyone's trying to be diligent in what they're saying. And all the council members here take a lot of unfair criticism from the public. This is one thing that just frustrates me to the hilt, is people that sit behind their computer in their pajamas, writing things on Facebook, or writing their blogs, and it takes no courage to write something on Facebook or a blog or whatever. It takes a lot of courage to stand there or come up and talk to me one-on-one. All those people that write those things, they never do that. They have no courage. And so a lot of folks take a lot of criticism, both just about how they vote, but also personally, criticizing them for, you know, their family or things like that, and that's not fair, and it hurts them as individuals, and it hurts their family who read these things. And so I would just encourage naysayers to not say nay, I guess is what I would say. So Steve, Mr. Gottlieb, Councilman Gottlieb, thanks so much for your service. I really enjoyed getting to know you. It's been a lot of fun, and I think you have an election coming up here, fingers crossed, and all that. And frankly, you're one of the most congenial people I work with on council and enjoy, always have a very good word, and there's never a down day, at least you haven't shown them, so... And then Councilwoman Hoderick sits to my far left, fittingly, but despite all my expectations, we have agreed on more often than not, because a lot of the things in local government are just frankly, the blocking and tackling. I really appreciate your passion for helping promote the city, you know, and at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, as long as the city's moving in the right direction. I think that's something we can all agree on. And so that brings me to Jim Campbell. Oh, Jim, I see you can't speak up this evening. Okay, apparently scared. But in Jim's absence, I'll just let it be, noting that you didn't make it this evening, Jim. Duly noted, duly noted. And then Ed Pennington, as I probably had mentioned, first born, is named Edward, and Ed, and just in front of everyone here tonight, I want to announce that we didn't name the son after you. It's been a lot, it's been a lot of fun. Guy that I've enjoyed, somebody else that just says what he thinks, is pleased with being honest about who you are, and that means a lot, so... And Dave Henderson, I've been friends for four years. I mean, really, you got to know each other just during the election. And to Dave's credit, and this is another item that will never go on any plaques, and will never be lauded, and you probably won't see an article in the Troy Times about it, but Dave took on a task I was unwilling to take on. He called me right after getting elected, he said, "Doug, well, I was asked to join the city pension board." And I said, "Dave, that's a losing battle, you know, it's, they're not under professional management, frankly, I don't know what the laws are, but I wouldn't want to be the one that has to make those choices on picking stocks," and, you know, and he said, "I didn't know that, Doug." Well, in the course of four years, he, along with many others, have changed how that whole system is run. And so now it is under professional management, and Dave Henderson really deserves a huge round of congratulations for that, because it took a lot of guts, there was a lot of disagreement, a lot of people wanted to watch my statements about what was being said, but I stand by 100% of everything I said that is the right thing to do, and I really appreciate it. So, and you have an election coming up, best of luck to that as well. Well, 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 the mayor. So this is the one where people are really, they just can't wait for me to just let it rip. Well, I got to say, I really enjoy working with Dane. I really enjoyed getting to know him. Dane's a better mayor than he was city councilman, and I'll stick behind that statement as well. It's been a real enjoyment, because Dane has the ability to see both sides of the issues. And what I particularly respect about Dane, I will argue with him about something, and I can actually see the logical progression of how he got somewhere versus my logical progression. So it's really just a debate of who can undermine the premises and who can get there first. And so I really enjoy working with Dane, and many of you may not know this, but Dane is not someone that comes to politics naturally, I guess, is the best way of saying, you know, glad-handling, mingling, those aren't his strong suits, or the things he enjoys at least. But I want to congratulate him for taking on the state-of-the-city project, doing that. That was a big, big step for the city, restarting that, and hopefully it'll be coming again this year, and we'll keep promoting the city. And Dane's also one of these folks that doesn't seek a lot of fanfare, you know, I don't see him writing op-eds, or grabbing headlines, or competing, and doing those type of things. So it means a lot. And so, in conclusion, I'd encourage council, be bold. Don't feel like you need to frame things, just say what you think, because at the end of the day, the residents really do want very straightforward things, extremely straightforward things. And I think it's our job to serve them that way, and hopefully in the last four years, I've been able to live up to standards of those residents that elected me, and thank all of you for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. I've learned many things from L. Brooks Patterson over the years, especially in the past, since I've been mayor, I've had an opportunity to be with him at many events, and he's always told me, "Make sure you go last. Make sure you control the microphone last." So I have that tonight. And the only thing I really want to say, Doug, is I wish you all the best, you and your family, and I want to shake your hand. That's it. Okay.
It's a good thing that was a short version.
It took four years, but Doug finally spoke up. Next is reports. We have had one comment on a report this evening. Is there any other council comments regarding the reports that were in the packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening. And just before we close, this is the last council meeting before the election, and I would just encourage all of our residents to make sure they vote. You have no stronger vote than you have when you cast your ballot for an issue or a candidate, so I implore everyone in Troy, exercise your right to vote. It's the most important thing you can do for our community. We are adjourned.